Okay, we ready to start the meeting? Ready. Okay. I'll make a motion to open the meeting. Second.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Rhoda?
Aye.
Member Wolf?
Aye.
Member Reynolds?
Aye.
Chair Brewster?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, does anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. And Mike, you can also maybe mention your different Mike Reynolds.
That's the owner.
Okay. So this meeting, the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing for five State Street area variances. And the two area variances before us were for parking to allow zero parking spaces and for lot coverage to allow, I believe it's 95% lot coverage.
That's correct.
So at our last meeting, we have received some comments from some nearby property owners. And we had an email that came before us with a very long list of comments and things for us to consider. So I want to start the meeting tonight by saying the public hearing is still open and giving any opportunity for anyone that is either present here or online to make any additional public comments. The other thing I want to say is there is an election today. And I want to have a hard stop today at 8:30 so that people can get over to the election nearby and actually vote. Is everyone on board with that?
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Justin, if I may just clarify one thing, the very long email attachments that you referred to, that was the email from Allison Foot, F-I-U-T, to me dated September 3rd, 2024, that was transmitted at 5:40 PM. And the attachments were the summons and verified petition and complaint, petitioner's affidavit of Charles Fitzsimmons with Exhibit A, the attorney affirmation of Allison Foot with Exhibit A, and petitioner's memorandum of law in opposition to the motion to dismiss the verified petition, all of which will file in some litigation related to the board's initial determination in this case.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Mindy. All right then, I'll go ahead and first of all, let's see if there's any additional comments so we can add the additional comments to things for us to consider. Is anyone? There's nobody present in the room. But if anyone would like to speak, you can click the raise hand button on the computer and we'll call you. Yes. If someone's present in the room, they can raise their hand here. Is there anyone online at all?
We do have three participants online. No hands are raised at this time. A hand just went up.
Okay.
Attending Mike Reynolds can speak now.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, great. Mike Reynolds, property owner, to clarify. The one comment I wanted to make was prior meeting, there was a comment regarding the ropes that we've had up around the parking lot. I just wanted to comment that if you recall, the site plan for the adjacent property actually had bollards and chains from about 2011 until about 2023, when we replaced those with what's there now. So that's always been a condition, you know, so I don't think that's a safety issue and it's never been petitioned to be changed in a site plan. Furthermore, you know, we've blocked off the parking lot for a number of months, really out of liability purposes, because, you know, people cut across it and without an operation there, we just wanted to mitigate any potential liability when we didn't have an operating business there or tenant. So that's, that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. There are any more comments? Anyone else like to speak?
Person TK, please state your name and address.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Tucker Cooley calling from the Village Bakery. I just wanted to add one more, one more comment if I could. In reviewing the 2019 comprehensive plan, that it was noted in the plan that there was going to be the importance of a comprehensive parking inventory to guide future development, ensure that the parking supply meets demand without adversely impacting the quality of the village. It's my understanding that that hasn't happened. Is that? Well, I know I can't ask questions, but I would, I would think before any decisions are made about removing parking from the village, it would be extremely helpful if that was followed through as mentioned in that 2019 comprehensive plan so that we have an accurate and updated analysis of the current parking availability and that future needs can be addressed or looked at before proceeding with the removal of these spaces. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Is there any other comments?
It's Mike Reynolds here again. Is it okay if I make another comment? Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Justin. Yeah, I did just to Tucker's point, I understand what he's saying. I will say that the comprehensive plan also talks about removing parking abutting the street, which it directly identifies this zone of the, of the village for redeveloping to remove that because it's very unsightly and unsafe having many egresses from State Street into the property. So that was also a point of the comprehensive plan, which I think was, has been noted in the past application and the past decision making with the board. So I'd say that, that, that's also an important attribute to consider here as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there, there's no one present in the room? So last chance for comments here. Is there any new people online I'd like to?
And we didn't receive any email comments since the last.
Okay. All right, well, we've received quite a few comments and I would like to kind of methodically go through them. But I would like to go ahead and start by closing the public hearing so we can go through what we have and not have this a changing list of stuff to respond to. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Second. Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Rhoda?
Aye.
Member Wolf?
Aye.
Member Reynolds?
Aye.
Chair Brewster?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Let's, with that said, I'd like to spend our time here going over some of these comments that we have received. And we got a long list of them, so I just kind of want to methodically move through them. I just want to start with something here, which is getting on wire, we here. And first of all, we're looking at the application that was before us, which was an application for, to allow zero parking spaces and 95% lot coverage. That's what was before us, we're not here to amend the application. And I want to address a couple of things that have been brought up over and over again, which was there is a former business there, Rachel's that operated previously. There is a previous area variance for parking for them. And then there is Starbucks that was there previously. I just want to state that things have changed considerably since those things, either Rachel's or Starbucks started operation, which is notably, the entire zoning code has changed and been replaced. And there's a new comprehensive plan that's been adopted since both of those things have occurred. So Starbucks is just so long ago, I don't see much at all about that as being relevant in today's day and age. And what we're here to look at is variances against the current code, not the code that was in place when Starbucks opened and when Rachel's opened, because that was completely different code at the time. So I want to look at what's before us and not dwell on the hypotheticals. Let's start going through some of these things here and some of these notes here. We'll start with item one here. So. I have the wrong document in front of me. So first of all, let's start with, here is a comment is a concern about drainage, particularly with authorizing 95% lot coverage. So inquiry was made with the building inspector for drainage?
I have a question, Mindy. If the, this isn't a handout and we're seeing where the comments are coming from, should we say where each comment is being brought up?
Yeah, these, these comments all came from the documents that were submitted by petitioner's attorney the night before the last meeting.
So we can just, everything that you're reading from this point on is from the attorney letter?
Well.
So it's, it's from the, it's from the attachments to the attorney letter.
Okay.
So they were, the, the comments were summarized and.
Just to clarify for the public, is that where they're coming from?
Okay, and also we're going to respond to other comments we've received as well.
Right. So I think the, the comments about drainage came from Exhibit J to the petition that people are following along at page three.
And the design submitted with the application talked about drainage. We also inquired with the building inspector about drainage. And the building inspector has said there's never been a drainage problem that he is aware of on this property. And there is a drain that is in the front of the parking lot and water is, my understanding is directed towards that. It's an existing storm drain. Okay, we're at 1B here. So there's traffic concerns. And if a parking lot was eliminated, that could impact traffic. Does anyone want to comment on that or have any thoughts about that?
Yes, in fact, I, I think it would have a very positive effect in that it would be slower, number one, and, and traffic calming. Also that it wouldn't, there wouldn't be parking, people driving in over a sidewalk, which is one of the main pedestrian thoroughfares on, on State Street. So there wouldn't be traffic, potential parkers driving in over that, over that sidewalk. So that, a potential clash between pedestrians and, and vehicles would be, would be avoided, not only on the State Street side, but also on the, on the Village Bakery side, because there's another sidewalk there. So I think in terms of impacting traffic flow, I, I think it's all to the benefit of traffic calming, something that has been a goal in the ATP and the comprehensive plan and also just general safety.
Okay, thank, thank you, Susan. I know when I backed up out of that parking lot, I mean backing up from that parking lot across that sidewalk is just not a good situation.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, well, just echo exactly what Susan was saying. As you are going from where it turns from the road to state, especially at certain very hectic kind of traffic periods, you know, close to 3, 4, 5 o'clock, that is a very backed up intersection. So the ability for, you know, less turnoffs for individuals going into a, a new building due to its new parking lot, the fact that individuals who are biking or walking or pushing a stroller, less chances for a car to potentially hit them from either backing out of the parking spaces. I know that I personally run into that issue, almost being hit by a car moving in that parking lot to cars, again, just being able to go smoothly down State Street. That would only be a benefit in, in my view to, to the village.
Okay. Thank you. Go on to C, as another comment we've had is we've heard a lot about this easement and whether this conflicts with some easement. Mindy, can you comment on the applicability of the easement in our decision?
Sure, so Judge Nasca addressed this issue in the decision, the motions to dismiss. And he found that the extent petitioners assert a violation of their property rights, the use that may be made of land under a zoning ordinance and the use of the same land under an easement or restrictive covenant are, as a general rule, separate and distinct matters, the ordinance being a legislative enactment and the easement or covenant a matter of private agreement. And the long and short of that is that this board cannot consider private agreements in connection with its variance determinations.
Okay, thank you. So we're, we're following your state law and village law and ignoring these private agreements. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. Next thing I want to get to is number two on this condensed list, which was a comment about this may exacerbate a parking shortage. And there is some discussion in the comments earlier about a parking inventory. And I do want to go back and cite the prior parking inventory, just so that's on the record and talk about what's changed since then. To my knowledge, the last parking inventory, or thorough one that I'm aware of, was done in the 2002 comprehensive plan. And the parking inventory there summarized the number of public parking spaces in the central business district in the village. And it found there is 366 parking spaces in the central business district. Since that time, the library lot was constructed. So there is a whole nother municipal parking lot was constructed. And now, just this year, we've authorized a second municipal parking lot next to the fire department to be constructed. So in addition to those 366 spots, I don't know the exact number more, but it's safely to say it's over 100 more have been created since that time. And I know that, I don't know if this is for the trustees or not, I've been talking about South Street parking and opening up South Street to, to parking at times. So there's still opportunities to create more parking spaces if there is a shortage. Susan?
Including in, in, in front of that location.
Yes, that's another thing is, I mean, we heard comments about, hey, why remove this parking lot? That has, and the building inspector confirmed that there is four regular parking spaces in this lot and one handicap space. Now, if this parking lot were eliminated, that would create the opportunity to create on-street parking. We don't have that, an exact proposal before us for that, but, so we don't have the situation of likely losing all of these parking spots, we're also gaining some back. So that's it. Now, Susan, do you have any additional comments on parking? I always look to hear from you since you've been a merchant in the village for many, many years.
So not only as a, as a merchant, but also, you know, kind of being aware of general trends in urban planning, also as expressed in the comprehension, in the comprehension plan, the kind of the dominance of, of the vehicle moving and stalking cars in urban areas, that's, that is being, that is kind of falling out of, of favor for pedestrian safety, for village walkability and for other concerns that would, that would promote kind of general village socialization and, and promoting a lively, a livelier street, something that's not just dominated by moving vehicles, but by inviting, inviting people, inviting pedestrians to enjoy the streets, less challenged by cars.
Okay. Any other comments anywhere?
I mean, I have anecdotal evidence, but as someone who lives further from kind of the central business district, I know that many of my neighbors, we, we love to walk into the downtown district. It's, it's almost like find a reason. And again, we, we have a lot of new, new families, younger families who moved in post-COVID, who came to the village specifically for its walkability. So you have a village that, one of the main draws is the fact that you do not necessarily have to drive to get to popular destinations within the village. So again, moving away from the traditional, I really hope that there's parking because I have to take my car to go to do X, Y, Z, to instead, let's put the kids on the bikes, let's get the stroller, let's walk with our neighbors to go get a coffee or, or food or whatever, whatever it may be. It's, it's again, moving more towards pedestrian safety, walkability as opposed to vehicular traffic.
Okay. I'll also mention a comment when we were listening to testimony from the brewery, that's part of the, removing the parking lot over there. This is Lot 32 Brewing Company, and this was the pavilion that was being constructed where a parking lot used to be. The commentary from the owner of Lot 32 is relatively few people come to, a lot of people are using Ubers and other public transportation means to get there and not necessarily driving and parking.
Right.
So times have changed, certainly since Starbucks operated over there, whatever it was 10 years ago. Anyway, a lot of changes.
Starbucks, by the way, since you bring it up, moved from that location to a location where there is just on-street parking and a municipal lot in the back that it accesses. So it doesn't, it doesn't have the same number of parking lots that it, parking spots that it used to have.
Good point.
Excuse me, there's a question from our peers, that the code that we're basing.
The public hearing is closed.
Thank you for the public hearing.
Okay. It was a clarifying question to your comments.
Okay. Sorry, we're talking about Starbucks. Is any other comments on parking inventory and availability of parking downtown? Any other?
No, just that basically it has increased.
Parking has increased, yes.
Right.
I would.
Substantially.
I know I live a five-minute walk from this, from here, and I don't have, there's pretty much always parking on my street. So anyway. So I do believe there is adequate parking within a relatively reasonable walk. All right, number three. Let's see, with that, with two. So number three, okay, and we had a prior comment on this. A concern of, hey, if there's no parking lot here, they'll park next door at the Village Bakery parking lot. And I think every business and every parking lot has this issue and they're, they can just post signs if they want to, to say parking for patrons of Village Bakery only.
And it would be, you know, up to individual businesses to regulate that.
Yeah. If, if, if someone is not visiting your business, yet they're parking your parking lot, it's, it's important to, to post signs and enforce it.
Okay, there is some additional comments about the time when Rachel's Restaurant was closed during COVID and they had turned their parking lot into outdoor seating. And there are some concerns about this time. Does anyone recall that ever causing any problems? I don't.
No, and I kind of fail to see how, you know, any circumstances that arose because of COVID, you know, are germane now.
Yeah. I, it doesn't seem applicable.
Okay. There are some comments also about the bakery losing access to a handicap spot. I checked with the building inspector about whether that would create a violation. And the building inspector said the Village Bakery has a handicap parking space and they comply with applicable ADA requirements for the number of ADA parking spots. So I don't see how those are, are relevant when the bakery already has adequate ADA parking spots.
Is this, this is due to food delivery? Grubhub, picking up food?
I think they said that, I don't know, there's comments about when that parking lot was closed, a lack of ADA parking spots was a concern for them. But they have ADA parking spots that aren't part of this property. Okay. Getting to four, again, there's looking back at Rachel's and there was a prior area variance we granted under a different code. And that area variance is for a code that no longer exists for parking. But anyway, looking back at that and we found at the time that that proposal was the minimum necessary for relief at the time to allow five parking spots and for 24 seats. And my comment on that is that was different code at the time. And also that was what the applicant had applied for at that particular time. That application isn't before us. And that was the minimum needed for that particular project and for that particular application. What we have before us now is part of a different application, different code. And I just fail to see how any of that is really germane. Yeah. So again, I think we need to stick to what's before us.
Yes.
Number five. There's safety concerns for drivers, cyclists and pedestrians. And we already commented them, I think, Susan, you commented on it quite a bit. Any additional comments on this?
Yeah, I just, just the contrary. I think by no parking spots means no potential conflict between pedestrians and people who are driving into, into a lot. So I think it's going to be safer for everyone.
Yeah, I, I agree, not backing up a little parking spot onto the sidewalk is a good thing, I think.
I mean, each one of these parties, drivers, cyclists and pedestrians and frankly, pets as well are all safer.
So the proposal before us eliminating the parking lot increases safety.
Yes, right. And it's, you know, and it's also very site specific. Because as I said before, it goes, that parking lot goes over a sidewalk in the front of a building, which is, you know, kind of contrary to historic preservation guidelines, number one, and, you know, comprehensive plan desires, number two.
But also, I mean, that is, it goes along a, a state highway, I believe, or a state.
Yeah.
So it's a very, you know, that's an active roadway, you know. So to the extent that it's smoother traffic, less potential for accidents, less potential for, you know, bumping somebody in the back as you're setting on the brakes to try and turn, not even return into one of these businesses, seems a lot safer.
That close to the intersection.
That close to the intersection, exactly.
Yeah, and Susan, you mentioned the comprehensive plan. I believe the, as part of our zoning code and the comprehensive plan, parking lots in a front yard are not allowed.
Right.
So parking lot is just plain not allowed in the front of a building in this district. So, and there's actually relatively few parking lots. So, and there's actually relatively few parking lots in front of buildings on State Street. I'm trying to think, there's a pizza place might have a couple spots.
Yeah.
And other than that, there is a.
That's, sorry, excuse me, but those parking spots are accessible from a road and not over a sidewalk.
Yes.
Right. So, and that's a huge difference. So there is, you know, there's not a potential for, you know, people on the sidewalk, you know, being in the way of somebody who's turning into, to a parking lot that is in front. That parking lot is accessible from the road between the library and the Pontellus?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I'll move on to six. I kind of mentioned this earlier, but again, this was rehashing on what's changed since Starbucks and Rachel's were here. Said Starbucks used to operate with, with just a handful of parking spots they had, as did Rachel's. And since those businesses opened, our entire zoning code and new comprehensive plan was adopted. So we have a completely new set of parking regulations and that's what's before us tonight. So the parking regulations that existed when Starbucks and Rachel's opened are not before us. Any other comments on that one?
No.
Okay, number seven, additional concerns about traffic. And in particular, there is a 2010 Monroe Avenue Corridor study that had identified the number of cars going down Monroe Avenue. So does anyone see how that's relevant?
Well, just, just for eliminating the parking spots, because I can only imagine that there's more traffic along the Monroe Avenue corridor. So I think, you know, again, turning off of, of State Street right after the intersection into the parking lot and now with more traffic in back of you, I think it's just, you know, a bad, bad recipe.
So reducing the number of curb cuts for people to turn off the road, I think actually improves safety.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, well, well put.
I, I think that was, if you want to say some old stuff, I think there was another study by the town when they were doing, taking a look in front of Pittsburgh Plaza and reworking Monroe Avenue down there. And the comment was there's too many curb cuts, reduce some, make it safer. I think that's a valid, very valid comment to consider. Let's see, we have eight here. But again, about the parking variances. So let's talk a little bit about the problems with this particular property and parking. So I asked the building inspector to comment on the parking requirements. So first of all, the building inspector verified there are four parking spots, greater parking spots and one handicap parking spot in the lot currently. And I asked him how many are required and he said for retail use, six parking spots are required. So this particular property does not have enough parking spots under the current code for retail parking. And for the parking spots required for restaurants, and this has been a restaurant or coffee house for decades, the requirement is you must have one parking spot per employee and one parking spot for every four tables or four seats. So if they have two to three employees, that would leave them with the option to have, if there's two employees, they could have three more parking spots, should be 12 seats. If they had three employees, they could have eight seats in a restaurant.
Well, I believe they, they originally said it would be four employees, two additional on the weekend.
That's part of this one. Okay, so, so what you're saying is basically they, if they had six employees, they just plain can't comply with the code. Anyway, to say that this property has a challenge of being profitable and complying with code, I think is quite obvious. They can't comply with parking code and operate the types of businesses that want to, that want to go there. And so that's a challenge. Now, we all know that as far as constructing new parking, there is commentary that the proposed restaurants may require 26 parking spots. I think we could all agree that it's impossible to construct 26 parking spots on that property?
Yes. I don't know any cars that would fit for that, matchbox cars.
In terms of the application before us, the commentary in the application before us was the, what was proposed for the patio and everything there was proposed, that eliminating the parking lot, constructing the patio, constructing the handicap ramps and everything that they did there, is that fully complied with ADA code, even with no handicap parking spots. That was in the application before us. I didn't hear any commentary from the building inspector that that application violated code. There's always a question of whether a particular design complies with ADA requirements. And I guess about all I can say is it depends on the design and they can't get a building permit if they, if it doesn't comply with the parts. So any hypothetical changes to that will have to comply with ADA requirements. C, I think we already mentioned that. And D, we've mentioned that as well. Another question was whether or not, if we approve a parking variance, the question was should it expire or should we have any conditions of approval? Did anyone want to comment on that? I mean, typically we don't, variances typically run with the land.
Right.
And I think the only time when we have them expire is typically when they're closely associated with a project and don't necessarily, and really tied to that project. I think we can agree that the parking challenges are a chronic issue for this property and not necessarily a particular project.
Yes.
Right.
And I would say the same thing with the lot coverage as well. The challenge of complying with 60% lot coverage is not going away for this property.
Right.
Okay, some comments on the lot coverage variance. The, again, there is a comment on drainage. And we heard from the building inspector that even though this property is nearly 100% impervious surface, he is aware of no drainage issues with the property. Another comment we received from the building inspector regarding lot coverage is every single property on State Street exceeds the 60% lot coverage. And I'm not even sure where the 60% lot coverage is in the zoning code. But also in the comprehensive plan, the zoning code, I know it's, I believe it sets a very close front setback. And if I look at the comprehensive plan, the downtown district is supposed to be dense urban design. That's typical. Does anyone see any conflicts with having a higher lot coverage in the downtown portion of the village?
I think it would just be a recognition of reality.
Yeah, but that's it.
Okay.
Pre-existing non-conforming Pittsburgh Village.
Yeah, we see quite a bit of pre-existing non-conforming to stay at least.
But that also defines, helps define the village. You know, something that is compact and varied, varied uses, user-friendly, pedestrian-friendly. So I think, I don't, I don't think that's a negative at, at all that it's pre-existing non-conforming. In fact, you could argue that that has created the charm, you know, of a, of a very walkable village where you can shop and eat and et cetera.
Yeah, and also the, the lot coverage and even the lack of parking is quite common downtown in the village. So if you look across the street, there's Hungries, it's no parking.
Right.
100% lot coverage. You have Thirsty's next door to it.
Right.
No parking, I think almost 100% lot coverage.
Right.
And you have the other restaurant over next to Town Hall.
Fattush?
Oh, there's Fattush, again, 100% lot coverage.
Right.
No parking.
Oh, you're saying the Blue Horn?
And the Blue Horn, again, 100% lot coverage.
Right.
No parking.
Right.
So all of this is completely common, I guess.
Right, and it was, and it was by the sign and it can more or less defines, you know, kind of village commercial. So I don't think it's a negative thing by, by any stretch, just think.
And I think actually the, the yogurt store as well.
Yeah, yeah, again, no parking, other than on-street parking and nearly 100% lot coverage. So I guess we can certainly say as far as compatibility with, with the community character and everything that this is quite typical of what is in that district and what is nearby.
Right, and in fact, it would be kind of more in line.
Getting rid of the parking lot would make it more in line, yes. Since none of, none of those areas right near Four Corners have,
Right.
have, none of those restaurants have parking lots in the front yard.
Right.
There is one by the clock that has some parking spots in the front yard, but that's.
Yeah, and that's also a reflection that I believe that was a gas station. So there's kind of a remnant, you know, a reminder of, you know, what was there many years ago. So that's kind of explained.
I think that's a relatively new building too, isn't it? It's not as, near as old as most of the buildings, but I don't know.
I don't know.
Are any, anything else anyone wants to talk about? I think that's gone through a lot of the.
I think just subdivision.
Subdivision?
I don't think that we know my way or another, what happened when five State Street became two lots.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no idea what happened with that. All I know is that it's operating as two separate properties.
And recognized as such, you know, over the years.
Okay. So that was the public comments that we've received and commenting kind of exhaustively on them one by one.
Were these public comments or comments from the attorney's material?
The attorney submitted the legal documents from the lawsuit as public comment.
Okay, so they weren't public comments from the public hearing that were submitted that you were just reading off?
Yes, they were submitted.
These were all from the submissions from the petitioner's attorney, the Village Bakery's attorney.
Yeah, the attorney.
And from some, and also addressing some of the comments raised by the public as well.
Chief attorney?
No, that were spoken at our last meeting and spoke at this meeting.
Okay, because we didn't get any comments for the record, for to, to me, for as public comment. So wherever these came from, these are, these were new, that's why I'm asking.
They're, they're not new. They were posted as a, as a result of the materials that we received by email the night before the September 3rd meeting.
Okay.
They were sent to Mindy and said to you.
But I forwarded them to you in the part of the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I can ask clarifying offline, because if they were submitted as part of a public comment to the attorney, I guess there's like no name and address as to who those public comments were coming from.
I think that you redacted them when you posted them, but they were from the owner of the Village Bakery.
That, so that's who they're from then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want me to address some legal issues that she raised?
If you would like to, by all means.
Please.
Yeah, I mean, the first issue that she raised was that, was one of notice. And maybe Alexandra, you can comment on the mailing that was done and the publication that was done for the, for the rehearing.
For rehearing? The notice was sent for September 3rd or September 4th rehearing was sent out on the 21st, public notice and the mailing. So newspaper and mailer are always sent on the same day. For August 21st, for the September 4th hearing. And the posting, the yard posting, I did not get that date from Steve and when he put the sign.
I spoke to Steve about that and he told me the property, the sign was put in front of the property on August 30th. So that was the, and I would just like to note that in local law number one of 2023, the village amended village code 210-312A to require public notices to be made at least five days in advance of the hearing, not 10. There was some question as to why this board made a determination on the variance applications after Mr. Van Simi drew the applications, and that's factually correct. This board made determinations on the area variances on April 5th, 2023. And the application was withdrawn after the variance determinations were already made on April 27th, 2023. The Village Bakery's attorney raised some issues as to whether the challenge to the parking lot and lot coverage variances were moot. That issue was addressed by Judge Nasca in the litigation. And he specifically found that the claims were not mooted by the fact that Mr. Van Simi had withdrawn his, his application after you made your determinations. The Village Bakery's attorney made a comment about that they really need a fence variance and that I, I didn't really understand that, but the judge disagreed with her and found that the fence variance application issue was moot because it had expired by its own terms. The petitioner did not appeal that determination, so it's a law of the case and you don't have to deal with the fence variance here.
Well, the fence variance isn't before us tonight.
Correct.
And we made that expire because it was pertinent to a project, not necessarily the property. And I don't see the need to take that up.
There were some comments made, legal comments made about the deep restrictions. We talked about that at the opening of this meeting where the court had determined that private property rights are not within the purview of the ZBA. So you properly excluded any consideration of that. The Village Bakery took issue with the ZBA's type 2 classification, which is just wrong if you read the plain language of the seeker regs that we cited in the determination for the area variances. They very clearly classified this as a type 2.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't even understand that. They were claiming that variances are in action and the definition of action in seeker is quite clear, that it's the construction activities, that's the action. And what they're physically doing to the land is what we're looking at. And that's what we've always looked at, is what is physically being done to the land?
Yeah, essentially, I think the issue was that they conflated the definition of action with the definition of an approval. So they, they didn't appreciate the fact that the area variance determinations were approvals and the underlying development request was the action.
And we had said that basically the underlying. And we had said that basically the underlying change, the construction, the change was constructing a patio with under 4,000 square feet. And they also, the change in use of an, the property was changing use to a new type of restaurant.
Right, and.
So it was reusing an existing property. Okay.
Right, and also that it was an individual setback or variance or adjustment under 617-5C16. So there are three separate bases where this board promptly considered the application to be a type 2 action. I'll talk about the deed restrictions.
Talked about the deed restrictions.
And that, that's it in terms of the, the legal issues.
Thank you, Mindy. I guess another comment I've heard is that by allowing no parking, we're allowing anything goes on this property. And what I want to mention is anything that happens to this property, any construction, still needs to go through site plan review and get a building permit. So that can still come up and look at exactly what is proposed at that time. And also, any new use that is somewhat high intensity, like a restaurant, has to get approval from the board trustees. And again, they're completely able to take a look at how intense the use is, how many parking spots that might drive. And they can ask them to reduce the number of seats, change hours of operation, change other things if they think it's too intense for this particular property. So rather than this being anything goes, I think what's before us is just allowing the particular proposals to be reviewed by the trustees and planning board and so on at the time of what it actually is and act on its merits.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, at this point, you've conducted your public hearing and you've started your deliberations. I don't know whether you're done or not, but just wanted to remind you that the rehearing itself was done pursuant to New York State Village Law 7-712A12. And at this point, you are allowed to reverse, modify, or annul the original order, decision, or determination. But it has to be, if you're going to do any of those things and not, if you're going to do anything, any of those things, it has to be by the unanimous vote of all the members that are present, provided that the board finds that the rights vested in persons acting in good faith in reliance upon the reheard order, decision, or determination will not be prejudiced. And that just means that if you're going to change, you, you can change your decision, the decisions that you made to, to grant the area variances. But if you do that, you need to find that nobody's going to be hurt by that determination.
So as far as findings go on impacts on the environment, whether it's substantial, any of that, do we need to revisit all of those? Or as I know, we had findings previously for that?
Well, you can just reaffirm the findings that you made before because your prior determinations are all part of the record in this.
Okay.
Unless you want to change them, you can do that too.
I guess I'm not entirely sure next steps here. So we either look at those, I had not looked at the text of our findings that we had found before. I think I have them here in our packet. You want to look at that? Do, do you want to reaffirm them? Do you want to change anything? I'm not sure what people want to do. Okay, they are in the prior packet. I guess I can read them. I believe this is what we have, I can read this.
Yeah.
So first of all, previously, we had found that a requested variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties.
Excuse me, Justin, which variance are you talking about?
This is the area of the lot coverage one.
Okay, thank you.
So we found it will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. And we mentioned that at least with the application before us, the site will be more attractive. The existing lot coverage is already almost a hundred percent and drainage has been accommodated in the proposed patio. That should be had found before. I guess we can add to that is that the existing drainage is not known to cause any problems.
Right, and it's also stated by the building inspector.
Yeah, building inspector stated he's unaware of any drainage issues. I think we've added a bunch of things in our discussion today that also kind of talked about the environment surrounding there of what neighboring properties are doing and what other restaurants are doing. Many, many of them have high lot coverage or a hundred percent lot coverage. So that's completely consistent with the character of the neighborhood.
Right.
The X1B, the finding we originally made was we found the benefits sought cannot be achieved by some other feasible method. And we said you cannot construct a patio without exceeding the lot coverage. Can't construct a functional one, at least. And I think that's true. Can anyone else see another way to, a feasible method to achieve outdoor seating?
Not in our physical dimension.
Okay. The next one is C about whether the lot coverage is substantial. And we found it is, I guess I'm not sure how to address this. There's a comment on is it substantial relative to code? If it's 95 to 100% lot coverage versus code at 60? That is a substantial change. However, it is not substantial relative to what is currently there, which is it's currently nearly 100% lot coverage. And proposal was for 95% lot coverage, so it's a small change relative to that.
So it's substantial versus existing, correct?
So.
So 100 to 95.
Right.
So it's substantial versus code, not substantial versus what's existing there. So I, I don't know what.
I think so, that way.
I think it's the other way around, yeah. Because it would be substantial versus code, which is 70%. However, it, prior to this proposal, it was already at 100. So we're going to 95, so that's not substantial.
Right, but I mean, even if you looked at the code, I think that if you look at the, the fact that so many other properties in the vicinity.
Correct.
Are, you know, have lot coverages that are similar. It's not, you could find that it's not substantial in the context of the neighborhood.
Okay, so it's not, okay, not substantial in the context of the neighborhood as well, okay.
Okay.
I, I like that, I was going to add a comment about that.
Sorry, I've got something of a head cold today, I'm a little fuzzy.
I don't want to concede that, but it's either 4:00 to 9:00, so.
Rough morning for you.
So it's almost like relative to the existing comp universe, it's not substantial. Because everyone in that universe is above, like 60%, closer to this area.
Right, the lines.
Okay, D, proposed variance. We found previously that it will not have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. And again, it was the same as we had for A. We said the site will be more attractive, the existing lot coverage is already almost 100% and drainage has been accommodated in the proposed patio. We also add the addition that the neighborhood has many restaurants and commercial properties with 100% lot coverage. And that's more than norm. So this is typical of the neighborhood and will actually totally fit with neighborhood character.
Well, and will enhance it by the removal of the parking lot in front of the building, which.
From a safety and.
Not only safety, but just, but according to, I believe, HPV guidelines now about no parking lots in the, in the front of buildings.
Okay, so that will make it more compliant with code, more compliant with comprehensive plan and historic preservation standards, all that stuff.
Right.
Okay, the last thing is whether or not it was self-created. We previously found the alleged difficulty is self-created in that the desire to create a patio that is 95 to 100% impervious surface is self, is self-created. And we said this alone does not conclude granting an area variance. I'll read more from this. Why it is the minimum necessary for relief. So it previously found it is the minimum necessary to provide relief because there is minimal room on this small property for a patio. Any further reduction in impervious surface will not meaningfully alter impacts and still allowing for a patio. Property cannot comply with lot coverage requirements in the zoning code without altering an existing building that predates the zoning code. That's what we had found before. Anything?
I mean, it still applies.
Okay. And here is some additional comments we previously made. The following physical characteristics of property relevant to this variance request. We said that it was consistent with traditional downtown in the village. 100% lot coverage is common. The two properties across the street are approximately 100% lot coverage. This is Thirsty's and Hungry's. As are many other commercial properties within 500 feet of this property. This is consistent with a village comprehensive plan, transept concepts, which are on page 66 of the comprehensive plan, that place higher intensity development downtown with pedestrian-friendly accommodations and moving suburban-style development with more parking and yard space further away from downtown in the village. So those are placed. The zoning code and the comprehensive plan prohibit parking lots in the front yard. I think that's pretty exhaustive and we've commented on much of these things already tonight.
But I think the, the safety benefit, have we touched upon that enough? Because the more I think about that, I think it's so important.
So this is lot coverage, first of all. Is there, is there a safety benefit to lot coverage?
No.
Okay, I guess we can get to that with parking.
With parking, yeah, sorry.
So Mindy, with, having discussed all of those, what's our next step? Would it be to vote?
I think, I think you're ready to make a determination on this on the rehearing, whether you want to affirm, reverse, modify, or annul your initial determination on lot coverage variance.
So if we affirm it with maybe tweaks to our language, is, does that require affirming it? Or does that require an alteration?
No, if your determination is the same, you grant the, the lot coverage variance that was requested.
That's affirming.
That's affirming it. You don't need, that's not a modification, even if you augment your determination.
Okay.
A modification would be if you said they can have lot coverage of 98% and not 95%.
Gotcha, okay. So as long as that's still, the same number is affirmed, that was approved before.
Right.
This actual resolution language could be, could be changed.
Correct.
But we're still affirming the same.
You're affirming the prior determination.
Gotcha.
And you are augmenting the findings upon which that determination is based.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'll then make a motion to affirm the prior determination approving the and granting the area variance for the reasons that we've stated.
Oh, second.
Member Brooks?
Aye.
Member Ramos?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Bristow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And again, this is for the lot coverage variance. Okay, I have the, yes, the next one was parking. We'll discuss this at length. And our prior finding, we'll start with A again, was that the requested variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties in that they, this is consistent with our overall vision of the comprehensive plan to provide a pedestrian-friendly destination. Aesthetics will improve. Many properties in the village downtown have no parking, including the properties across the street. Adequate parking exists in the village, across the street in municipal lots or on side streets. No business can operate in this location and comply with parking requirements in this code. I'm not sure if no business can, but it's, I'm not sure if anything that could, could be profitable. I don't know if we should change that or not. But anyway, it says no business can operate in this location, comply with the parking requirements and code and code requirements are inconsistent with the physical reality of the site.
Right. And do we want to add here that there is more parking available due to the newly acquired Bank of America lot?
Yes.
And the potential for parking spots on the street?
Yes, there is additional on-street parking could be created by this.
Right.
So the fire department lot? And on-street parking can be added.
But in front, right in front of the property?
Yeah. Any other comments? Okay. B, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other feasible method. And we said there is no feasible way to build adequate vehicular parking on this site. So.
Well, I think, well, especially, you wouldn't be able to do that if it were to comply with the code because of what Steve said with the employees.
Yes.
Because every weekend they would be in violation, because they would have.
Yeah, there's.
Four employees and two additional, so they'd have a total of six on weekends and during peak days in the summer season.
So if it's, if you need one parking spot for employee and you have five parking spots, one of them handicapped. So if you had six employees that aren't handicapped.
You're out of luck.
And we agree you can't build more parking spots on the site. And we agree you can't build more parking spots on the site. Okay, anyway, now to C. We previously said the requested variance is substantial in that it is substantial relative to code requirements. And then said C, A, and B above, it is not a large departure from existing conditions. People generally agree with that?
Yes. We gave a list of similar businesses that have zero parking.
Yes.
Yet operate. There's Thirsty's, Hungry's, Yotality, now Fettish, Bluehorn.
So again, it is not substantial relative to neighborhood character. Because lots of them have no parking. Okay, so that was C, substantial. D, the proposed variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district because, and we had said before that it was consistent with the overall vision of the comprehensive plan to provide a pedestrian-friendly destination and encourage non-vehicular transportation. Aesthetics will improve. Many properties in the village downtown have no parking, including the properties across the street. Adequate parking exists in the village, across the street in municipal lots, or on side streets. Drainage is accommodated in the design by routing stormwater to a storm sewer. Can I add that the building inspector said that he is unaware of any drainage issues on this property?
Yes.
Okay, anything else? All right. E, the alleged difficulty is self-created. We found it is self-created and the desire for zero parking spaces is self-created. And then we said this alone does not conclude granting an area variance. And then whether this was the minimum necessary to provide relief. We said a patio cannot be built if the parking spaces remain. Is it worth mentioning why this is different from the prior application for Rachel's?
Wouldn't hurt. The fact that it's a different code, different zoning district.
Yeah, so why we found things differently with the Rachel thing is, yeah, that's completely true. The zoning districts have completely changed, the zoning code has completely changed. The Rachel's decision was for the application presented at that time. So it was the minimum needed for that application. And right now, we're looking at a different application and proposal.
Right. And the nature of each application, they were quite different.
Yes.
As well. I don't know if nature is the right word, but the characteristics.
Okay, and then we had, I think, similar comments with the previous one on physical characteristics of the property relative to the variance. He says it is currently a dangerous, non-compliant parking lot. The planters and bollards are routinely hit by cars attempting to navigate the existing parking lot that is lacking endspace maneuvering. A non-compliant unauthorized parking spot is next to an egress door and impedes the travel lane in the adjacent village bakery parking lot. The building inspector and board believe this non-compliant unauthorized parking spot is dangerous and obstructs access required by fire code. The substandard drive aisle and parking area creates hazardous situations for pedestrians in the high-use sidewalk. The parking lot connects to State Street, which is a busy state highway. Safety is very important in downtown area of the village and pedestrian safety is a significant part of the Village Comprehensive Plan and active transportation plan. And I would say that we find that safety is improved by this proposal eliminating the parking lot.
Yeah.
And I heard member Wilkes mention that it's not just the pedestrian's safety that will improve, but also bicyclists and pet safety.
That's correct. A lot of pet owners.
Yeah, absolutely.
Myself included. Don't want anything to happen to my dog.
Previously, the last thing is we added some additional findings. We found that this was consistent with downtown in the village. 100% lot coverage is common. The two properties across the street are 100% lot coverage, as are many other commercial properties within 500 feet of this property. This is consistent with the Village Comprehensive Plan transect concepts from page 66 that place higher density development downtown with pedestrian-friendly accommodations and moving the suburban-style development with more parking and yard space further from downtown. Zoning code in the comprehensive plan, page 90 prohibit parking lots in the front yard. So we talked for a minute about lot coverage there, but anyway. Is that sound reasonable to everybody? Possibly.
I also heard comments when you were deliberating about if there's a problem with trespassers at the village bakery part of the parking lot, that that's an enforcement issue.
That's a good point.
Could be dealt with by the property owner by posting.
Yeah. It's important for the property owners to personally, you know, to be able to enforce, you know, any trespassers. Someone who is parking in their lot that is not a patron. Should be adequate signage, cameras, someone actively working to.
That's an enforcement issue, not a zoning issue.
Correct. Not a zoning issue.
To the extent that you've received public comments about private property rights, though, those are factors that this board is not permitted to consider in connection with the variance application.
I guess I will make a motion to affirm the prior decision approving the area variance for zero parking. Second.
Member Reynolds?
Aye.
Member Wilkes?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Bristow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
About five minutes to spare.
We've got about five minutes to spare? Who wants to close the, who wants to close meeting? I would love to. And make a motion to close the meeting to discuss the five stage.
Second. Member Wilkes?
Aye.
Member Reynolds?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Bristow?
Aye.
Motion passes.